Good evening, welcome to our 2018 Election Forum Series here on WEFS and at FloridaToday.com. I'm Isadora Rangel, your host for the evening and Florida Today's engagement editor. Today onstage, we're going to be meeting the candidates running for school board districts one and two. District one covers Titusville and North Brevard. District two covers Merritt Island, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa Beach, and parts of Cocoa and Rockledge. And just a reminder that all the school board races will appear on the August 28th primary ballot. And just to go over the rules before we start, each candidate is going to have one minute to answer my questions, as well as one minute for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement. Candidate Frank Sullivan unfortunately cannot join us tonight due to an unforeseen family emergency. We wish him the best. I also want to thank Eastern Florida State College and the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast for partnering with Florida Today in hosting this series of forums throughout the elections. So let's begin with our opening statements. The first one to go is Misty Belford. She is the incumbent in district one. Misty, you have one minute.
Thank you, Isadora. I am mom to two children, still in Brevard Public Schools. My youngest is in sixth grade, so I have many more years working with schools from the parent perspective. In addition to that, I taught at the college level for about 13 years. I taught at both Rollins College and Eastern Florida State College, and as Isadora mentioned, I have been serving on the school board for the past four years. During those four years, in addition to my statutory duties, I also have served as the board champion for leading and learning, which encompasses student services, equity, innovation, and choice, and of course, leading and learning in secondary and elementary. I also serve on the Florida School Board Association Legislative Committee, as well as the advocacy committee, so I spend a lot of time advocating in Tallahassee for educational issues. I took part in Leadership Florida Education Class III. I've been a strong advocate for the north end of the county, and I have built a number of important relationships with principals, teachers, students, parents, and legislators throughout the state. So I am eager to continue that service and keep the positive momentum going that I've created in the past four years.
All right, next is David Meter.
Thank you, Isadora. Thank you everybody for being here this evening. My name is David Meter. I am a teacher. I've been teaching for 14 years in Brevard Public Schools at Jackson Middle School, teaching U.S. history and civics. During those 14 years, I've held a number of leadership positions in the educational industry. When I announced my candidacy a few months ago, we had three A schools. We have none left in North Brevard. That's terrible for a district that prides itself on being an A district and serving every child with excellence. Four years ago during our last election, we had seven A schools. This trend has to stop. We need to reprioritize our budget and get the resources down to the school level where it affects the children, the administrators, and the teachers the most. Thank you.
And next is Shayna Moore. Shayna?
Thank you. I was raised and educated in this county. As both a teacher and a student, the success of this district has been very important to me. It's been part of my life, for majority of my life, working with the school and being a student here. I will dedicate myself to the success of the district. In addition, I hold degrees in technology and finance, two areas which the district needs better leadership. Thank you.
And next is Cheryl McDougall, running in district two.
Thank you. I'm a licensed clinical social worker who has spent 11 years in public education, the last six as a social worker. Prior to that, I worked 10 years in a managemental healthcare corporation, where six of those years I was a director, where I negotiated contracts, oversaw department budgets, and was responsible for a staff of 15. I am passionate about public education and our students. Our children deserve a quality high education that prepares them to be engaged productive citizens. I'm a strong advocate for safe schools that include social-emotional learning, school social workers, and school SROs, School Resource Officers. I am also an advocate for a curriculum that teaches problem skills, solving skills, anger management. That's what I'm an advocate for. I also want to advocate for our teachers, so they get what they need to support themselves and our staff to support them. Also, the school district needs to be responsible financially. These are the reasons why I'm running, because I care about public education.
And next is Charles Parker. He's also running in district two.
Thank you. Since 2004, I've been teaching students and training teachers kindergarten through college, almost exclusively in district two. In the last 30 years, I've raised four children who've gone through Brevard Public Schools. I currently have a granddaughter who's starting first grade next year. Prior to teaching, I worked in aerospace and I worked in tourism. I also served in nonprofits and served in ministry. The mission of Brevard Public Schools is to serve every student with excellence as a standard. Right now, we have only 30% of our schools are A schools. Only 40% of our students are not reading on grade level. 37% of our students are not up to proficiency in math, and 43% are not proficient in science. That's not a teacher problem, that's not a school problem, that's a district-wide systemic policy and budget problem. I will bring my problem-solving skills, which come from core conservative principles and common sense leadership, to the board.
All right, so let's move on to the good part. We're going to start with school security. The first question is, the school board voted to table Sheriff Ivy's school marshal program to train and arm school employees who are not teachers. If elected, would you vote to revive that plan and why? Remember, you have one minute, and the first one to go is David.
Thank you. I have come out very strongly against having school employees carry weapons on campus. There's no secrets in a school. You will know who is carrying these things. If you are surrounded in a fight situation, it's pretty easy to have that gun removed from you if you're surrounded by a number of students who are my size or larger. So we need to have school resource officers, uniformed officers, that are able to engage any problems that we have. Another thing that would help solve some of these problems would be us adhering to class-size amendment. It gives more eyes and ears on the campus, and we're able to react to any potential problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna, you're going next. Would you vote to revive the school marshal program?
I've been thinking about this question for a while, and I have spoken to people that work in the sheriff's office, in addition to people in my area, to see what they were interested in doing. I would not vote to have this program with the sheriff's office reopened. There's some liability issues that concern me. I want to have resource officers. When I'm teaching, I have a relationship with my school resource officer. I have him meet my students. I teach technology, so I would have the officer come in and talk about what he does and the technology that he uses, and that gives my students an opportunity to meet him and feel comfortable with him. So that way, in the future, if they feel something's going on, they'll feel comfortable going to him and talking to him about what's going on.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I have always, from the very beginning, supported school resource officers. They're the ones who are trained, they signed up for this occupation, an educator signed up to be an educator, to teach children. So I want to be proactive. I really feel that we need to bring in social workers. We need to bring in a curriculum that teaches anti-bullying, friendship skills, empathy, problem-solving skills, setting goals. That's where I stand. I believe that school resource officers are community policing at its best.
Do you support the marshal program?
I do not. If we include school resource officers, absolutely. But to arm our teachers, or custodians, or our cooks, any school staff, I think we're going the wrong way.
Thank you. And Charles, you're next about on the STOMP program.
I'm first for a school resource officer in every school. Secondly, I'm for full implementation of the Aaron Feist Guardian Program, which we locally call STOMP, train-to-arm staff members in schools, not in the classroom, but in the schools, staff. I am worried about some equity issues regarding that, so I will look into that to make sure that all schools are equally represented. I'm also for hiring retired veterans to come in and work school crossing guard hours to guard our entrances and exits of schools when we're most vulnerable, when they're open in the afternoons and in the mornings. Also, as a former pastor, I know a lot about counseling, and I know a lot about mental health issues. So I'm for added training for guidance counselors on early warning signs, and as well, I'm for partnering with our local mental health agencies. I'd rather do that than hire more social workers and psychologists this time, so that we can keep our costs down and have less bureaucracy.
Thank you, Misty.
Thank you. As the sitting board member, I actually had the opportunity to vote on this issue, and we ended up, the board has fully funded school resource officers for every school in the district. Unfortunately, our law enforcement partners don't have enough officers to cover every school. So in the interim, we have created the school safety specialists. Those individuals are in the process of being interviewed and background-checked right now as we speak. The majority of those individuals are people that have an extensive background in either military or law enforcement, and so those people will be covering the schools where we do not have school resource officers. The funding is there when our law enforcement partners can come up with officers to put in those positions. In the interim, we have the campus safety specialists that will be there, and I feel like this was a good compromise with our community. We're bringing in people who have experience, who are committed, and their sole job will be to focus on campus safety. School resource officers have a different role that I think is as important, if not more important. So I think our best approach is to make sure that we have both of those areas covered, someone to focus on security and to fill the role of school resource officer.
And very quickly, would you vote to bring back STOMP? Yes or no?
No.
Okay. So let's move on to the next question, which is about the school security specialists that the school board decided to go with instead of the STOMP program. I want to ask the candidates, do you support that version of school security, which entails hiring civilians who will receive a gun and training to react to an active shooter? And the first one to go is Shayna. You have one minute.
Thank you. I am interested in having this in the short term, until there are enough officers available for all the schools. I feel it's really important to have school resource officers. A school resource officer is so much more than just someone making sure guns are not brought in the school. They build relationships with the students, and they make the students feel safe. So I feel the best investment would be in the school resource officers.
All right, Cheryl?
I think the school board was in a rock, between a rock and a hard place, so I think since we don't have enough school resource officers at the moment, no, I really, that would not be my first choice to have security specialists, but I think at this point, they had no choice. I really want somebody who has more hours of training than 132 hours, minimal hours of diversity training. I'm glad they have psych testing. I think that's really important. But I really feel that school resource officers become part of the community. That's what we should aim for, that's what we need to look for. We need to really have Tallahassee stop mandating without funding. That's kind of how I feel.
And Charles, you're next.
First off, I'm for the security specialists as a stopgap measure until we get the SROs trained and hired in that situation. I'm not for them being permanent employees, and I wish that we'd have had the sheriff's department hire them instead of the school system hire them, again adding more bureaucracy to our already bloated school system. You know, the state has provided about one and a half million dollars for positions. Of that, we can spend about, 1.2 million of that money can go to hiring 10 SROs to pay for 10 SROs, and then with the other 300,000, we can actually have three of the guardians in every school for how much it'll cost for those. So that's four folks that we can have in schools protecting our students for the 1.5 million that the state has provided. As well, we needed about another 2.3 million to hire the rest of the SROs. We can get that from our half penny sales tax, so I think that we can fully fund SROs in every school and the guardian program.
Misty, you're next.
I did support the campus safety specialist program. I think it is an important coverage for our schools. I think it's also important to note that these are not individuals who have zero experience. We're hiring people who have experience in military and law enforcement, and they are going through 176 hours of training with the sheriff's department. The issue with the guardian program, I spent a lot of time speaking with folks in my community, getting feedback from them. I met with principals at all of my schools, teachers and staff at all of my schools, and parents and students at all of my schools, in addition to the community forum. Most people indicated that they had concerns about the guardian program, but that they would be comfortable with someone that had a military or law enforcement background that would go through the training and would be strictly devoted to campus security. So I think that what we've done is come up with a good compromise to work with our community and address those concerns. I think that we need SROs in addition to the campus safety specialists. The feedback I got was that even one person on a campus is not enough to keep our campuses secured, so I anticipate this will be a conversation that we'll be having for many more years.
David, you're next.
Thank you. I do support the school resource specialist. This was an alternative, it was a good compromise, because we need to get the schools covered. Unfortunately, I don't believe that we're going to have every school covered by opening, just because of the training aspect and so forth. School resource officers, that is the ultimate goal, to have them. That's what Sheriff Ivy has said. He said, "The best deterrent is a uniformed police officer in the school," and that's what I want to see at each of our schools. Another thing that's going on though too is, we're putting up fences and everything, but I'm still seeing easy access into our schools beyond the fences, beyond what they say is single access. We need to be addressing this, like Sheriff Ivy said, needs to be multi-layered. So keep the problems out, make sure that the guns don't get in to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's move on to another hot topic, which is teacher raises. We received several questions from our readers at Florida Today regarding this topic. So I'm going to begin with, what is a fair salary for a starting teacher? And how would you fund that if you don't raise taxes? And would you support raising taxes for that purpose? The first one to go is Cheryl. You have one minute.
You know, the fair, here's what I look for teachers' salaries. I really think we need to look at what education, many of our teachers have gone to graduate school, and they're making 25, 30,000. That's really unconscionable. We need to look at a pay scale that allows them to earn step increases for the educational education that they've received. I also think that we need to get creative in ways to, what can we do? I wish we could have put something this year and let the voters decide. Do we want to fund a mill levy for security and teachers' raises? Let the community decide. I think that would have been important to put out there for people. Did I miss part of the question? I'm thinking there's a part I didn't answer.
If you support raising taxes to pay for teacher raises?
I would like to put it out to our community. They're the ones who would decide whether they would support a mill levy for a teacher's increases. So that's what I would propose.
Sure. And Charles, and just to rephrase the question, what is a fair starting salary for a teacher? And would you support raising taxes to fund teacher raises? And if not, how would you pay for that?
Well, starting salary for teachers around 40,000 right now, and I think that should certainly be a little bit more, and I'm certainly for every year giving teachers raises at least what a cost of living is. Last year, teachers got a 1.5% raise and cost of living was 2%. I've told the union, I've told everybody I've spoken with, I won't sign a budget, I won't vote for a budget that doesn't give teachers at least a cost of living raise every year. As far as paying for it, we can do cuts, and we can do some special savings as well. We can cut, we can say, this is what we're going to pay teachers, here's what's left, and give the department heads a chance to cut spending in their departments. Or we can do some savings. I've been thinking a lot about this. How about we look to share services among neighboring districts on copy leases and supplies this kind of thing, lower those costs? How about having professional development online for teachers instead of having big professional development events? How about having more e-textbooks, so we don't have a bunch of hard copied textbooks sitting on shelves not being used in schools? How about limiting copies? Thank you.
Misty, your turn.
It's interesting, if you look at salaries, to say this is what I believe a fair salary is for a teacher, I don't think would be necessarily accurate, because I don't think that teachers can ever be compensated enough for the work that they do. I do think that we have some elements that we can look at for comparison. If you look at the average median income in the state by county, Brevard County ranks 19th in the state for median income for all industries. Our teachers rank 22nd for teacher median income. And so we certainly have a gap there that we have to address, but there are other elements as well. We have some huge inequities in our pay scale from years and years of adjustments that have been made to our compensation program, and those have to be addressed as well. And then I think also, we need to look at an opportunity to keep our good teachers in the classroom by providing them an opportunity to make additional dollars, supporting their peers, sharing their talents in the school, so we have that wealth of knowledge there and working. But they can also grow personally, financially, and professionally as well.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. As far as a starting salary, I believe our starting salary is fine. It's when you've been there five, 10, 15 years, and your salary hasn't moved, that we have a problem. We can do a number of things, but the most important thing is, first, is the school board has to be committed to it. Make sure those dollars are put there for teachers to have a salary increase. So what are some of the things we could do? We could have different grades of teachers, teacher grade one, two, three, et cetera. We could have longevity supplements. So there's a variety of things that we can do. I would not support any tax increase. I would not feel comfortable asking the public to vote on something before we had fully dissected the budget. You can look at the budget and you see, here's the operational dollars, but it doesn't break out and tell you exactly where those dollars are going to, where are those funds exactly being spent on. We have to do that first.
Thank you. Shayna?
I do support having students, or I'm sorry, teachers having cost of living raises. I've spoken to teachers about that. I myself am a teacher, and many teachers actually told me that they are okay with not having a super-high raise if they were able to get their second planning back, because a lot of teachers are really overwhelmed trying to figure out, they're going, they're doing unpaid overtime, trying to grade students' papers, and to upload grades to headline, they're trying to get all this stuff taken care of, and some teachers actually go in on Saturday to work to get this taken care of. So I am interested in getting them money for the second planning period, and then also, I want to go through the budget thoroughly and take out, cut the fat.
And would you be interested in ever raising taxes for that purpose? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, great. So let's move on to the next question. After the Parkland school shooting, the roles of school boards across the state has changed and is a lot more high-profile than before. One of the main issues that has surfaced is the issue of mental health. The district, as you probably know, is getting an amount of money from the state to increase mental health counseling. How do you suggest that money be used going forward to help students with mental health issues? The first one to go is Charles.
First off, I wanted, I didn't, the last question, I would not support a tax increase. I didn't mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mentioned earlier that I'm a former pastor and have had a lot of experience in counseling and mental health issues, and I think I mentioned earlier as well that I would like to see us add more training for our guidance counselors. We have guidance counselors on campuses who already know the students, and we start training them on early warning signs and give them a little extra time so that they can meet with students and help with those issues. They're really the front line of defense and mental health issues in our schools. Secondly, we have great mental health agencies here in Brevard County. I think we can much better spend the money from the state by partnering with them and having our students give access to them on some kind of a pay-as-you-go basis, as opposed to hiring more folks and adding more bureaucracy to our school system. There already, we already have many professionals in Brevard that can do this work, and I think that's the best way to do it.
Thank you. Misty?
About 80% of the funding that we receive for the state is, it's all categorical, but it's determined for us how we have to spend it. The state has prescribed a large portion of those funds to be spent in specific ways. So we're in the process of working through that plan now to make all of that happen. Part of it is adding some folks at the schools, and one of the reasons that that's important, in addition to partnering with community organizations, is we need to have people who can come in and meet with students at the school. If we rely a lot of times, unfortunately, on parents to get their children to service, it just doesn't happen. And so we have some real social issues in Brevard County that we need to address as a community, but at the school level, we have to do what we can to get those services to children, and so I think that's a critical part. Another critical part is the social workers that we're bringing into schools. Yes, it adds another layer of people that we're putting in the schools, but there again, it's critical for us to be able to have those trusting relationships with the families and the students, and to connect them with services in the community that can assist them.
Thank you. David?
Okay, thank you. Okay, as far as mental health, we have to understand that the school can only provide a beginning. It's going to take more than what a counselor, any mouth, or I'm sorry, mental health professional can provide at the school to truly help some of these students. Another problem with this is, when a student leaves class, as I've had, since I know these issues pretty well, and they come back to class the next day, they've missed their lesson, they're nervous about not getting caught up and so forth, and it provides, not provides, but it gives them additional tension, and they feel like they're never going to get caught up. We're going to have to look at if we're going to provide this, maybe doing a flex schedule where there's what they call power hour at some schools, where there's time for study hall, and using that time for students to see a counselor, maybe bringing some additional counselors in at that time.
Shayna?
Thank you. I've heard from guidance counselors in the schools that they want to serve the students better, but when testing season comes about, they're out proctoring the test, they're doing this and that, and they don't have as much time as they would like to dedicate to helping the students. I would like to try to brainstorm or come up with some sort of idea to where we have more time for the counselors to help the students, and then the counselors can make recommendations as far as having them have outside therapy. Or at a school I worked at, we had, it was called Flex, and it was like a study hall once a week, and maybe a counselor could meet a student on campus during that time period. Thank you.
Cheryl?
It appears that I'm the only one who has been a school social worker here, and what I have found is, students would be referred to me or come to me when there was a stressor or overwhelmed, and trust me, it wasn't a fun time always in my office. Many of my students were required to bring their work because I needed a quiet learning area. It was too noisy in their class, or the lights were bothering them. So a social worker, I think, is crucial, or a counselor, that can make a connection. It's all about connections in our public education. It's about connecting with our students, understanding, having someone that they trust that they can go to when there's issues that's upsetting them. It could be their home life, it could be they haven't eaten, they're living in a car. So a social worker or a counselor who has the time to meet with them can support these students to help them grow and remove barriers to prevent them from getting an education.
Thank you. So moving on to our next question, which is, there are some schools in Brevard that are super overcrowded, while others are being underutilized. How should the board address this issue? Some of the options are building new schools, changing district boundaries, or buying more portables. How do you think the board should address the issue of overcrowding at some schools? Let's start with Misty again.
So one of the things that is incredibly difficult for a community is to change their community school, because schools are such an important part of a community, and obviously building new schools is costly. So I think it needs to be a combination of several of the things that you mentioned, Isadora. We have to look at the specifics of that community and that school and determine what's going to be best for them, while making sure that we are being as efficient- going to be best for them, while making sure that we are being as efficient with our dollars as possible. We cannot actually build new schools without approval from Tallahassee, and we have to prove that we do not have capacity in the district. They additionally restrict the funds that we can use to build new schools. So, there are some hoops to jump through there, even if the funds were available to do that. But I think what it comes down to is, in each and every one of those situations, we have to move beyond the numbers, and we have to look at the students and the community and the culture of that particular school, and determine what's going to be best to address that situation.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. A lot of the overcrowding that we see, it isn't just at some schools, it's at all schools. And this goes to the class size amendment. Class size amendment is not being adhered to, and your classrooms have gotten crowded, you don't get the personal attention that your child needs. And this goes back to even school counseling. I had a parent tell me that their child decided not to commit suicide because they were able to come in and talk with me. My door was always open. With the overcrowding that's going on, with teachers having to teach extra classes, a lot of times those doors are closed. If a school is truly, doesn't have enough classrooms, we are going to have to look at possible rezoning for some of these, or portables. There's nothing wrong with a portable. I went to, I had a number of classes in portables when I was a child, and I did just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna?
I'd like to say that I agree with both Misty and David. And portables are fine, we could add portables. I know that some of the properties actually had portables taken away recently over the past few years, but I had classes in portables, and I kind of liked it, because it's a way to get away from the main building. But in regards to the class size amendment, I think that we should, I was an elective teacher, so what that meant was I had six classes I would teach a day, and I'd have up to 180 students a day. I love building relationships with my students, I love making that connection, I want to see them successful. Unfortunately, I can't do as well as I would want, because I have 180 people I'm talking to a day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I also agree that portables are a way to go. It would be, it's difficult when communities think that their children are going to be moved to a different school because the school's overcrowded, and I think we really do have to look at the class size amendment, because it's been proven, and studies have shown, that smaller classrooms increase student achievement. What gets in the way of that often is restructuring of classrooms, hiring teachers, and funding. But if we don't decrease the classroom size, I think we will pay as a society, because it leads to higher dropout rates, decrease in earnings for our students when they graduate. So, I would think the best, we would need to talk to the community, but also to look at portables as one of a solution that might be palatable for everyone involved.
Charles?
Well, the last couple of years, the district's been looking at a $40 million, five-year capacity plan, and that included building some elementary schools, reopening an elementary school, and adding portables. And that's all important things to do. You know, 75% of our half penny sales tax goes to facilities, and pretty soon, we'll have a lot of the air conditioners fixed, we'll have a lot of the roofs fixed, we'll have a lot of those big-ticket money things, so with that half penny sales tax, 75%, we'll be able to build up some funds to help with this problem. If we do have to change boundaries, which would be my last resort, I would grandfather in students in sixth grade, eighth grade, 11th and 12th, so that they would be able to stay in their schools and not be moved at the last minute, basically. I'd also got to note that, of course, we're a choice district. We do have regional busing starting next year, so even if they're moved out of a district, there would be a potential through a choice program that they'd be able to get on a bus and move over as well. So, there's a variety of options we have with that.
Thank you. Let's move on to charter schools. The Florida Legislature in recent years has passed laws that require districts to share infrastructure dollars with privately-run charter schools, and they give incentives for charter schools to open next to struggling public schools. What do you think about the legislature's move to help charter schools? Do you support that or not, and why? And let's start with David.
Thank you. The legislature needs to understand that you cannot provide the same amount of funding and expect two buildings to be maintained. It's just not possible. If the legislature chooses to fund charter schools, that's fine, to give parents a choice. If parents want that choice, they want their child to go to a charter school, that's fine. But it's not going to cost less, it's going to cost more, because there's a certain amount of maintenance that has to be done for each school, just from a facility standpoint. So, that needs to change a bit, and I've talked to some of our legislators, they are aware of it, and so that may be something that's on the table right now. I certainly hope so.
Shayna?
I, I feel that, I do agree with David, that when you have the charter schools, you're going to have to increase funding. It is nice to give the parents a choice, but the one thing that scares me is having money go to charter schools and taking away money from public schools, because public schools are already struggling as it is. So, I would like to try to keep money in the public schools and not give as much to the charters.
Cheryl?
I feel that charter schools do have a place. They are a good option for students who struggle in a particular setting in a public education. There are some charter schools that do a great job. I am concerned if the, if the overall oversight of charter schools are left up in Tallahassee. It needs to stay with the district. The district knows their population, it knows their schools, it knows what would best work for their students, so I want to make sure that it doesn't go up to Tallahassee to oversee charter schools, but it remains with individual districts. I think that there's some really great charter schools, but I am concerned if there's one right next to a public school. We are a school district of choice, and there's, as Mr. Parker stated, there's busing that's coming next year, that will help our parents be able to choose different schools, that the one that's near them is not appropriate for their child.
Charles?
I've been a competitor all my life. I think competition makes us better. Matter of fact, I run a choice program at Maryland High School right now, an engineering program, so I have to fight for students to come to that program. So, we're a choice district, charters are part of that choice, we live with them. This summer, as a matter of fact, I had a chance to visit a charter school in Cocoa, Emma Jewell Charter. Thomas Cole's the principal there. They had 120 students there, working this summer, doing math and reading enrichment. They weren't in that, in this classroom, pasting pasta on pieces of paper. They were working on math skills and reading skills, because they know that students, especially low-income students, fall behind each year over the summer when they're not currently active in schools. I am against Amendment Eight, which will be on our ballot. Amendment Eight does have term limits for school board members, which I'm for, however, it also has Tallahassee being able to start schools and oversee schools within districts without any district control. Against that completely, I'm for local control. Let us in Brevard County take care of our Brevard County schools.
Thank you. Misty, you're last on charter schools.
Thank you. When charter schools came about, the idea behind them was to provide flexibility and an opportunity for innovation, so that public schools could learn from that and incorporate those things into the public school setting. The concept of that, I think, is a good concept. The challenge is that the expectations, the limitations placed on public schools with how our funding can be used, everything from, building codes are different for public schools and charter schools, funding streams are different for public and charter schools, expectations for teacher qualification and student achievement, all of those things differ between the two of them. So, I am not opposed to charter schools. I feel like the best school for a student is where a student can do well, and if that happens to be in a charter school, so be it. I do believe very strongly that it is my role to make sure that the best option for all students is public schools, and so I am very committed to ensuring that that takes place. But I also believe that we need to make sure that we level the playing field between public and charter schools, because if we're going to have competition, then we need to have things equal.
Thank you. So, let's move on to the next question. The district's school sales tax is to be used for educational technology, district security, and facility renewal. Will you support renewing it when it expires in 2020? If not, how do you plan to pay for the millions in capital needs the district has identified? And the first one to go is Shayna.
I plan on, one thing that's really important to me is going through the budgets, going line-by-line, seeing where money is spent. Also, there are grants that we can apply for, for various things, especially with technology. So, I want to try to take advantage of opportunities to get money to us without having to raise taxes or to keep that half-cent tax for a long period of time. I think that the money is being used really well towards the properties. I've seen some really nice changes in the schools. The school I worked at, their gym finally has a, an air conditioning unit, which is great, but, thank you.
Cheryl, your thoughts on renewing our existing sales tax?
I would first want to look at, okay, what have we gained by the current sales tax, and what is left? What is left in our system and our district that needs to be addressed? Possibly, we wouldn't have to renew it, but if our, if the infrastructure is not complete, we have aging schools. 70% of our schools are aging, they're going to need some updates. So, I would be very cautious, but I would look to see what needs to be done, what's left to be done, and can we get by with what we have, or do we need to ask, again, to renew that?
Charles?
Brevard County doesn't raise taxes very often, and I believe it was well over 60% that they, Brevard County supported that half penny sales tax. And the important component of that was that there's a citizens oversight committee. Last month, I had the opportunity to meet with Gary Shifrin, who's in charge of that. He was my former boss at Maryland High School, longtime principal, and they've done a great job of tracking the money spent and being very transparent about how that money's been spent, and it's been a boon for Brevard Public Schools to help fix our aging facilities, to help with our technology needs, and also for our security needs. So, I would be out there helping Mr. Shifrin and his others re-up that in 2020, and I think the citizens of Brevard have seen the positive effects from it, and I think they'll support it again.
Thank you. Misty, would you support renewing our sales tax?
I would support renewing the sales tax, because I've had an opportunity to see the details behind what we needed initially, what we've been able to accomplish with the funds that we are currently receiving. There's still a lot of outstanding, and I think it's important for folks to understand that this is an investment in our community, and if we don't have the dollars there to continue to address those issues, it's going to be incredibly costly for the district. The other thing is, because we get so much, so little capital funding from the state, one of the things that we have not done is set up a routine maintenance plan. So, the dollars that we are currently investing in new air conditioning systems, that we are investing in roofs, that we are investing in various aspects of facility renewal, we currently do not have a funding stream to make sure that we have a regular maintenance plan for those. So, I think it's important that we have that opportunity. The, in the ICOC, which has been overseeing all of that process, has been very diligent in making sure that the funds are spent as taxpayers requested they be spent. I would mandate that we have the ICOC going forward for the sales surtax program, but I would certainly support it.
Thank you. David, your thoughts on the sales tax?
Thank you. I also spoke with Mr. Shifrin, and they are doing a great job as far as oversight. We are bringing in more dollars than what they originally anticipated, so we need to look at where are we at as far as facilities. This goes to your capital side. Operations is where we are lacking right now. This is where we don't have money for retaining our teachers, and expanding, making sure that class sizes are where they should be according to the class size amendment. Teachers are the ones that are on the ground and make the difference in a child's life. You don't necessarily remember too much about that air-conditioned gym, but you remember that teacher who took the time to help you out. So, maybe we look at some flexibility if we ask for renewal on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're running out of time, so we're going to have to move on to our closing statements. And now, we're going to start with Charles, and then, and then we'll move down to line. Your closing statements, you have one minute.
Three years ago, I started a fitness journey. Since that time, with focus, determination, and drive, I've lost 50 pounds and run three half marathons. Six months ago, I started this campaign, and with focus, determination, and drive, I've knocked on hundreds and hundreds of doors, engaged with thousands of voters, had a great time doing it, listening to their concerns. During that time, I've also earned the support of Congressman Bill Koch, Bill Posey, Speaker of the House Steve Chrystofoli, the Florida Association of Realtors. In three months, when I begin my new role on the school board, I will use the same focus, determination, and drive to expand our vocational programs, to reduce class sizes, to increase teacher pay, to increase security, and to improve our test scores so that we could truly serve every student with excellence as the standard. Thank you.
And actually, I apologize, we actually have one more question that we can fit in, and then we'll go back to closing statements in a little bit. I apologize for that. Actually, I want to ask about sex education. Many school districts believe in abstinence-only education programs. Do you support the teaching and enforcement of comprehensive sexual health education, including information about both abstinence and contraception in public schools? And we'll actually start with Cheryl now.
Okay. I think knowledge is power. When we give people the knowledge, I think they can make some good choices. But along with the teaching, the abstinence, and the, about contraceptives, I think we also need to teach an emotional side, because there is an emotional side to intimate relationships too. So, I do support that. I think we need to, as I say, let's give accurate, age-appropriate information, but also have the ability for the parents, if they disagree, that they can opt their child out without any penalty.
Thank you. Charles?
I'm for sex education that would look at abstinence as well as prevention, prevention not only for teen pregnancy issues, but also for sexually transmitted diseases, and I think that's a proper role with properly-trained teachers.
Thank you. Misty?
I too would support a comprehensive program that addresses both abstinence and prevention. I think it's important to provide the information. Obviously, for anyone who is familiar with the school setting, when we enter into those opportunities for education around relationships and how bodies develop and all of that stuff, parents always have to opt in or opt out of that situation. So, a note goes home to parents, saying, this is what we're going to be discussing, and if you don't want your child to take part, then please let us know. So, I think that's a great way, excuse me, to build relationships with parents and have those conversations, let them know what it is that their child's going to be learning, and I think it opens up the door for additional conversations at home as well.
Thank you. David?
Okay, thank you. I agree with Misty that abstinence and the rest of your sex education should be taught. However, as she stated, the parents need to opt into this. They need to be able to look at the curriculum. Do you agree with what is going to be taught? And if a, in this particular subject, if a teacher is going to want to deviate from the curriculum, bring in other sources, those things need to be shared with the parents before it is presented to their child, because ultimately, it is their child, and they need to be able to make that decision for them.
Shayna?
I think that we're all in agreement that we do want to have a program that will help our students understand sex education. I feel the parents should be involved. If they feel their child should not participate in those discussions, then maybe the parent can sign a waiver, asking for the student to work on something else in the library. But it is very important to learn about that, because teen pregnancy, sexually transmitted diseases, all this stuff can be controlled better if there is the sex education.
Thank you. Now, we are officially doing closing statements, and I'm going to ask you to be brief, because we have about four minutes left. Cheryl?
In closing, it is my passion and my work-life experience that makes, provides me with the tools to be an effective board member here in District Two. I bring my corporate business skills of negotiating, organizing, and supervision along with my social work skills of empathy, active listening, and advocacy to District Two. I will work tirelessly to make sure that our students and teachers have what they need to succeed. I will advocate up in Tallahassee to make education a number-one priority, because if it's a number-one priority, it's a bright future for all of us. In essence, I want to remove barriers that prevent children from receiving In essence, I want to remove barriers that prevent children from receiving a quality education. Thank you.
Shayna?
Yes, I want to make sure that we think smart, more efficiently with what we do in our schools. I have a background in finance as well as management information systems, so I would want to research different software types. We just left Edline, we're going into a new software program this year. I would like to make sure we research as best as we can, so we don't have mistakes like we had in the past. And I want to go through the budget diligently, and I really, really enjoy working with the schools. I enjoy building the relationships with the students and the parents. I want to see students be more successful.
Thank you. David, very briefly, your closing statement.
Thank you. Please vote for me if you support reprioritizing our budget to put resources in place at the school level for our students. Returning to the class size amendment, open communication and access, paying teachers a salary that will keep them in our schools, and a discipline plan that supports them. As a board member, I'll assist on equal educational opportunities in District One, so our children do not have to be bused away from our community. And as a representative for you, I will have an office in North Brevard, so you can come in, make an appointment, and speak with me about your concerns. This is my commitment to you. Thank you very much.
Misty?
Thank you. It has been my honor to serve our community for the past four years, and I am eager to keep the momentum and the passion going. Couple of the things that I will focus on going forward, safety and security, I think, is going to be a priority for years to come. Mental health support is an important part of that safety and security in our schools. I think we need to expand and make sure that our career and technical education programs are aligned with industry opportunities in Brevard, so we are supporting industry, and industry is supporting our community. I am passionate about equity and access to programs, especially in the north end of the county, but for all students regardless of their performance level, for low-performing, high-performing, and those middle-of-the-road students, to help them achieve their absolute best. Social-emotional support is another important aspect, and I think that we need to focus heavily on retaining and recruiting quality teachers to Brevard County. If you would like to know more about what I am passionate about, please visit mistybelford.com. Thank you.
Charles, I apologize for the hip cup. I'll give you about twenty seconds if there's anything that you want to say.
Well, I would like to mention again about vocational programs real quick. I'm a big supporter of vocational programs. I had the opportunity to meet with Jeff Arnott at Adult Ed, also here at Eastern Florida, and I would love to enhance our dual enrollment for vocational with Eastern Florida. We have a great dual enrollment program academically, and I've been meeting with Eastern Florida folks and the Adult Ed folks to really push that as well for our students that are not college-bound, because we have a lot of students that aren't, and we need to really focus in on them as well and not forget them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's it for our forum covering School Board Districts One and Two. Make sure to stay tuned at eight P.M. We're going to be hosting candidates running for School Board District Five, which covers parts of Palm Bay, West Melbourne, and Melbourne. And remember to go back to florida TODAY.com if you want to re-watch this forum and to follow our coverage. Thank you for joining, and thanks again to Eastern Florida and the League of Women Voters.